Okay. Well, I guess I don't have my, I don't have the agenda.
Are you, are you starting this off Chris or am I?
I was just gonna introduce everybody and welcome everybody to the meeting. And I think, you know, like I said, I don't have my agenda opened up in front of me, but I would typically welcome people here and then I would typically do, ask if there's public comment right now. So is there anyone from the public that would like to address the board right now?
There is not.
Okay, thank you, Mandy. Seeing none, then we'll go straight to you. Go ahead, Adrian.
Great. Good morning, everybody. I know this is a busy week and you've already had a lot of meeting time. So we have, I'll go through what we have on our agenda together today. We are going to get a staff presentation on middle school and high school and the direction, where, what they're doing now and the direction for where they would like to go with that. And we'll have plenty of time for a question and answer during the presentation and some discussion after. Then we will move into discussing the draft mission, vision and core principles. I sent you a handout right beforehand, but we will also be sharing things on the screen to get your reactions. Then we'll take a quick break because we'll have been on the phone for a little while. And then we'll go into discussing long-term goals of specifically the fourth through sixth grade grades span that we talked about at our last session. And then we'll wrap things up and talk about our final meeting, which is on July 15th. So our goal here is to, by July 15th, have a draft document for you all to consider and hopefully approve or not approve at that meeting, but generally have general feeling like this is where you want it to go. You're going to be approving it, I believe, in one of your August meetings. So I know we have about three hours scheduled for today, but it's as, we're going to take as long as you need. So if we can move things along faster, that's great because I know you've got some graduations today, but we wanted to make sure that we left plenty of time for a conversation if needed. So that's all I wanted to say right now. I don't know if there's anything Eric would like to add before we jump into a staff presentation.
Well, I just really appreciate, this is a crazy, busy week and this is the second time our board has been together in a meeting like this, you know, and so Adrian, I appreciate you and Becca joining, just observing on Mondays. You have a sense of what we were talking about and this, this inextricably links to that work we did on Monday. So I appreciate your work and I look forward to seeing the final product. Thanks.
Great. So I'm going to pass it to Kim to do the staff presentation.
That's good. Hey, everyone, we have middle school and high school to talk about today. And we have some great site reps here as well. So I will get us started and then hand some things over to when they want to comment about middle school and high school. I assume I can share my screen note. If you could give me abilities, maybe Mandy.
Oh, and I just wanted to quickly note while they're doing that, that we do put the staff presentation first today because staff have a very busy schedule as well and we're wanting, they need to go off and do other meetings. So thanks for accommodating that switch from what we did last time.
Sounds good. All right. Well, I will get started then. So this is our board study session, actually number five. So our focus for today is middle school and high school. It is quite a bit, you know, to kind of cover in one piece, as you can imagine, there's a lot of components of middle schools and maybe even more complexities at a high school. So we will do our best to kind of focus in on some of the highlights and big pieces, looking at where we are currently and where we think we would like to head. So we're going to start here on middle school visioning. And there's really been some great committee work around this. So let me just start here a little bit. And then John, Scott, you know, LOMs, anyone reps there, feel free to jump in and talk about this a little more. But as you know, Dr. Prater has a real passion for, for middle school visioning, being a real key component of a school system. Sometimes a little bit forgotten and shouldn't be, should be an area where we really focus in on what's best for students. And you'll know that we've had the national schools to watch program and LOMs has had that honor. And really amazing, right, to be honored nationally there. Lambs is also jumping into that and looking at what they can do to also, you know, kind of look at those practices. I want to be clear that it's not about the award, you know, it's not about being recognized. It's about national schools to watch has incredible components that make, you know, really highlight some of the best parts and components of what makes a great middle school. And then probably most importantly is it puts a middle school on a trajectory of looking and refining and constantly analyzing and have others coming to look and give opinions. And it puts you part of a whole community of middle schools within the whole nation that are really moving forward in exciting ways. So that visioning has been taking place in an elaborate, you know, setting with multiple representatives of the committee there. John, Scott, anything to add about the middle school committee?
Just that we, we've met about every two weeks since we started and it is really a great group of people. We hear from both sites. We've got a lot of dissenting opinion. And the slides that you're about to see with our middle school vision and mission statements are really why we came together as a committee was to try to define what we want our middle schools to be here in San Luis Coastal. Because middle school is such a unique time. So having all of these diverse voices, having these teachers who we chose, because they don't always agree with, with what Carl and I and Scott and Diana have been promoting, we brought them together and really the work that they've done has been amazing. You're about to see their, their vision and missions that they've come up with. And I really do believe they encapsulate what we are trying to do as a district. I know as a district, we, we've got our own vision and mission statement. This will align with, definitely with our vision and mission and as, as that changes and grows, so can the middle schools. They've really been a unified group to this. This is a vision and mission statement that is unanimous, has been shared out with our staffs at both sites and we're really excited to present it.
Great. I'll move into that then. So here is the, the middle school vision. So let's kind of break this apart a little bit. It starts with promoting social and academic equity. And I know is the board that, that you've been asking kind of for that filter of equity with Dr. Prater's eval, et cetera, for each individual learner. And I think that's the key thing. It's not just a whole middle school vision. It's really focused on each student actively supporting, so not passively, right? We tend to, we have to be careful of that in secondary, that we don't say it's all on the kiddo, right? That we're actively supporting the mental, physical, emotional, social welfare and safety of all students. So looking at through this campus culture, so it starts with relationships, right? Caring and respect, a partnership with the families as well as staff members who appreciate and understand this dynamic developmental stage of life, right? To think about where we were in middle school, right? Think about what that time of life is like. So the vision would be to receive rigorous, engaging instruction, looking at to design, and kind of nurturing that academic, that personal growth. Think about fostering curiosity, right? So think about the CTE things that we talked about previously that we're looking for ways to keep kids interested, to keep them engaged, to keep them curious. Developing student voice, kind of what are their thoughts, what are their passions, what are their interests? And then their connection between students and the community. So you can see kind of the final piece there, middle schools being dedicated to this high standard of academic excellence. So when you think about the vision, that's kind of the statement of where we want to keep things heading. Anything to add there?
No, I think that's great. And again, this was one that we worked Smith and Wordsmith and Kimberly hit on the highlights of those areas where we got stuck and made really conscious decisions about how we wanted that to be raised.
Great. So thinking about kind of how and what does it look like? So keeping students obviously is the center, right? Valuing diversity, supporting everyone, every single one, right? Equity, you can see there is the next one and looking at systems, I think is a key piece, right? There, there's that saying that the system produces what it was intended to produce, right? So really looking at what are our systems questioning each piece and thinking about what are we producing? Ensuring equity, right? That true equity, looking at access to things, achievement, identity, power, those pieces that really give every student the best chance they can. Using data being the next piece, looking at your resources and then what are those spaces like? So if you take the vision where we want to go, how, how would we do it a little more specifically? Then you can see here the staff, you know, having that connection, those relationship pieces, constantly working together to refine. There's no end in sight, right? For your curriculum, your instruction, there's no finish line, right? You always want to keep improving that, kind of looking at those research-based strategies. And then thinking about this to me is a key middle school piece, students' identity development. I'm preparing all students to be these curious lifelong learners that have that perseverance and grit like we talked about earlier. Okay, so kind of diving in here, you know, as you all know, we have sixth grade at LOMs only, right? And then we have seventh and eighth grade. So thinking about what we currently do, we have, you know, sixth grade at LOMs, you think about a full day. We have humanities, which means you have English and social science kind of combined into a humanities model. A lot of times that integrated kind of curriculum opens up time and opens up opportunities. And math and science usually cord with a teacher there. There's common reading, writing, math assessments going on. There's interventions available for identified students. There's a steam wheel for sixth grade students there and advisory, a time to, you know, connect relationships, that kind of thing. John, you wanted to jump in and maybe say a little something about seventh and eighth?
At Laguna, we, we only have that two-year turnaround, which is, is tough. And we, I know it's been a long-term idea in this district to really balance out the middle schools and add a sixth grade at some point to Laguna. And if that ever comes up, I would hardly be behind it. Because getting kids in seventh and then out in eighth is just such a quick turnaround. It really challenges us to, to have all of the growth in the students that we would really like to see. I think we've traditionally done, done a great job with, with what we get, but having one more year would be lovely. And you know, seventh and eighth are pretty typical across both, both schools at this point. Other than the fact that LOMs has a humanities base, so they combine their English and their social studies. That largely came out of research that, that shows that that is an effective way to do it, but also allowed them for more flexibility in their scheduling with a smaller group of students and a smaller group of teachers. Both of our, our schools provide a variety of CTE-based electives, including performing arts. And, and both our schools have fantastic band inquire programs. We have accelerated math and English courses, Avid classes for our, our students who are first in their families to go to college. And those are programs that we're looking at expanding there as well. Our math and reading interventions for our identified students, some great work has come out of our committees actually about looking at our math and reading interventions and then common advisory instruction for all students. LOMs has a much broader advisory program than, than Laguna does. They do it four days a week. They only do it one. Coming out of our COVID and online learning, we're, we're really looking hard at how to provide more support for our students, more equity for our students, more opportunity for our students. And one of the places we're looking at is how do we change our intervention programs at the middle schools to address some of that need and provide more opportunity for students?
Great. When you look at special education, I know we've gone over this a few, few times with the different grade spans. So I won't cover this too much in depth, but obviously our goal, working towards inclusion, anytime it's best for the student and appropriate. There is resource programs, so middle school campuses have these education specialists and they provide more specialized support. Co-taught, I know that you've heard a lot from Diane about how they're increasing co-taught, meaning a general education teacher and a special education teacher together in a combined class. And there's of course LI, MI, and then you have, you know, medically fragile, you know, those kind of wide range of specialized programs for students that are really needing it. So let's look at a little bit of middle school data. This is kind of a, you know, balcony look here, but just to get some general ideas. And when you look at our cast results, of course, we had to go to 19 because of the weird year we've been in now. But when you look at Lambs and LOMs, pretty similar, Lambs, 74% of the students in English language arts are meeting or exceeding the standard when it comes to the state testing. And 70% when you look at Los Osos Middle School. When you look at math though, there is a little bit of a different story where you've got Lambs at 70% meeting or exceeding, but LOMs only at 56. Okay, so I would say there's a, you know, overall strong, and this is concerning math here at Los Osos Middle School.
Can, can I make just two comments that our committee wanted us to bring up when they, they were looking at the, the data? One of the things that they wanted to mention is with the Lambs data, it's a little bit different because the Lambs data includes sixth grade data, whereas the, the LOMs data includes the sixth grade data where the Lambs doesn't. So when we look at those overall proficiency scores with LOMs, you have to remember that the sixth grade is factored in. Not that that always accounts for the differences, but it, it does, it does change our data a little bit. The other thing that the committee really wanted the board to know is that looking at Lambs and LOMs, you have to remember that traditionally Lambs and LOMs have been the highest performing middle schools in the county. So even if, if LOMs numbers look low at 56%, those were still higher than, I think, if not all of the county schools, then all but one of the county schools. So if just for, for context, sometimes it's hard to see the forest for the trees. Our numbers are, are great, but they're even better when you consider that we're outperforming all of the other middle schools.
A good point. It's not totally apples to apples with that sixth grade grade perspective.
And I think Marilyn and, sorry, I don't want to interrupt, but I think Marilyn and maybe Eve have a couple of questions if we have a minute to talk about the data.
Please interrupt because I can't see everyone and I only see six people on my screen. So please.
Okay. It's me, Marilyn, and I'm just wondering, have we, did we take advantage of the, our, our, the ability to disaggregate the sixth grade data from the, from Los Osos so that we could really truly compare apples to apples?
Yeah, we have extensively. And the, the issue with Los Osos math being lower is typically an eighth grade issue. So you, we definitely pull sixth grade out and, you know, look apples to apples, but more importantly, diving into Los Osos Middle School in particular. And there is definitely a dip of eighth grade math at LOMs.
Okay, I think Eve has a question and Mark. Eve, you have to unmute yourself.
Very simply, Marilyn asked mine, so I'm good. Thank you.
And Mark and Evelyn, did I see your hand too or just Mark? Mark.
Yep. So I have a couple up to this point. Let me just go. So when we talk about Avid and we see that as a success and a place to focus, can you tell me roughly what we have, like 42% are in that low socioeconomic status? What, what are the qualifications for Avid? How many Avid students are there? And if that program's successful, are we thinking about expanding it? Three questions.
So great. I'll answer generally and hand it off to you, John. So in general, Mark, you're right. Avid, in my opinion, is a program that hits perfectly on bringing students that are especially socioeconomically disadvantaged or have other poverty obstacles, focusing on them and, you know, giving them the skills, the mentor, the, the experiences to help them kind of change their trajectory, right? And Avid has incredible results right now. Any student that is a senior right now all have been accepted into a university. And, you know, so whether they choose to go or not, you know, is another story and those sort of things. There's other steps to go, but the goal is to get them so that they are accepted when they finish with us. I would say that in our school district, we do need even more students participating, you know, and we need to continue to beef up that program so that students have those opportunities and that kind of, you know, an adult that's walking them through the needed steps. In order to qualify, you need to have, be at the level that you're meeting or exceeding the standard to begin with. So you think about, it's a student that has a good chunk of academic skills behind them. However, I think as Evelyn often calls it, kind of it's that first gen student. It's that student whose parents have not attended college, have not, you know, have not had those, you know, school experiences. And so it's taking that, those students and saying, hey kiddo, we see a lot of capability in you. And, you know, you have tons of potential and we're going to walk you through getting there. And those are avid guidelines. It's not something San Luis Coastal makes up. There's guidelines that we follow that Avid says, here's the type of student you're looking for. And John, you want to add to that?
Sure. And I'm going to pass it over to Scott in, in just a moment. One of the, Avid is a really successful program. And we've been working since Scott's been running our Avid program for a long time. So he's kind of our, our head honcho there, but he and I have been working to get more teachers on our campus Avid trained over the course of the past few years. And our, our goal is really to have everyone on our campus trained in the Avid strategies because they are super effective. One of the issues in terms of numbers of kids, I think we have 27th graders and 17, 18th graders right now in Avid. One of the issues is it takes up their one elective slot. So students give up their elective to be a part of Avid, which our Avid teachers do a great job of, of engaging them and making it a lot of fun. But we're forcing students then to, to choose Avid or an elective. So that's one of the things that we are limited by. And when we talk about that equity and offering students lots of opportunities, I mean, Avid is a tremendous opportunity for students, but it, it doesn't allow them to participate in other electives because they have Avid.
I'm so sorry, but Evelyn, I think really wants to make a point. She's gesturing very adamantly on the screen. Evelyn, you got to take yourself off mute too.
Details, details. Well, I was just going to speak to that point. Thanks, John, for, for speaking about that. So my question would be, are there models where at middle schools where students don't have to give up an elective and have an elective and also have Avid? Because, you know, developmentally, when I've talked to students about, you know, Avid and sometimes trying to get students to participate, even though you know it would be a fantastic match for them and the success, some of it's developmentally, even if you talk to the parents and also, you know, it, it, it's, it's a difficult ask of students because they don't have the ability cognitively, necessarily developmentally to kind of project in the future where it could be. They want to see and participate in those rich offerings that we have. So my question is, do we have a model or is there a model where our students could have Avid and the elective?
Yeah, I mean, the, the easiest and, and I don't know necessarily easy, but the, the most obvious solution is to add another period to the day, which means students would have two opportunities in their schedule for elective. In terms of equity, that would bring more opportunity for our students who are in intervention courses, which also take up an elective slot, allow our Avid students to participate in Avid and also get to explore one of the many lovely CTE options that we have for our students to, to start them on that high school path, which, which might excite them and keep them better invested in schools. There's also a lot of different rotating schedules, but really a lot of it would be adding to the course of the day. Because Avid, at this point, while we want to incorporate Avid strategies into our, our English courses and, and bring those strategies and that, that discussion into every course that, that our students have as we train more teachers, still to dedicate a, a particular Avid course to them is always going to take a slot in their schedule rather than taking up an academic slot.
Oh, so John, one question to thought. So if you were in, in the course of adding, having more teachers trained and using those Avid strategies, do we have a model, is that as successful as a dedicated Avid course, you know, for kids to move through or?
I think Scott could probably answer that.
I can chime in a little. I, I think it's, it's similar shades of different colors. The Avid strategies are really amazing teacher tools for how teachers can create distinguished classrooms. We talk a lot about distinguished practices with our Danielson framework. And Danielson sets up some really good examples of what distinguished practices could look like. But the Avid strategies are really just core, good teaching strategies of how you can have those distinguished practices exhibited in your classroom. The Avid elective class is targeted specifically for students who are first generation college attendees. And so it, it is different. The, the things you do with your students in that elective classes are immensely different around academic skills development, but just college awareness. And sometimes we don't capture kids that we really want in middle school, but our goal is to capture them in ninth grade and launch them at slow high or more of a high. And so at times we do struggle and one of those limitations is a six-period day. And as John mentioned, for equity, our kids who want to push forward with an Avid class or our kids that we're trying to intervene with, with an academic, academic intervention, they lose out on those broad opportunities around our CTE pathway foundational courses at middle school. At high school, it's similar. I mean, at, at San Luis High, some of the kids struggle to stay in Avid consistently, but they, they, they tend to. They also have the opportunity to be CTE pathway completers, but it's a little more complicated because their number one goal and the number one goal of Avid is to gain access to a four-year university and then hopefully launch in a tent. So the, the Avid teaching strategies are just great teaching. It's not necessarily about first generation Avid student or it's about great teaching. And one of the reasons John and I have advocated for, for training teachers is because we want great teaching practices. But the Avid elective class is specifically targeted for first-in-generation families, students of those families to know more about the CSU, UC and private school system and to launch directly to it. They have the best opportunity of attaining a four-year degree if they start at a four-year institution.
So I think.
I hope that sums it up.
Yeah, I think a lot of people are interested in talking about this. Mark, Catherine, Chris and Eve. So I'm going to go back to Mark just because he, we kind of, we took some of his bandwidth there for a minute.
Evelyn's questions were, were spot on and asked much better than I would have asked it. So, and I guess at what rate are we starting or trying to incorporate some of the Avid model in across the board? Forty-something percent of the kids are not scoring really well. The Avid kids are scoring great. And that's just one of two questions.
I think I understand it and I'm going to, I'm going to try my best, Mark, and I'm going to try to be concise to respect everybody's time. The kids who are in the Avid program are largely gaining access to it because at the time they entered to get the Avid program, they were at or above grade level. And so they're largely successful coming in and we're trying to accelerate that and broaden their horizons. I think that one of the things that John and I have kind of overcome in the city, so to speak, is the idea around among our K6 schools that that student is going to be fine. They don't need Avid. And what happens is a student who is, you know, fours in sixth grade will come to the middle school and or slow high and they'll, they'll still do really well academically, but they won't realize all the opportunities that a family that has a college-educated parent at realizes. They will and the counselors will meet with them. At the same time, if they're high caliber, oftentimes they'll get a job in high school and they'll accelerate and they'll be an assistant manager by the time they're 19 and they won't realize all these opportunities before them. So some of the discrepancies in scores and success is because those kids come into Avid usually on a solid footing and then we're just trying to grow it. And if they stay in Avid, they're continuing. I mean, they are driven. Avid stands for advancement via individual determination and that id is the key to them. If they feel a part of something and they're driven, they're rock stars. Does that answer your question, I hope?
Pretty good. We'll, we'll go there another time if we can. And then John, you said how great we're doing. Best high school, best junior high stuff in the county, but we compared it to local schools. And I know there are similar schools across the state. So for me, that would be an interesting number. I don't need it now. But in the, I'm sorry, Chris, if it's okay to, to find out, you know, what are we doing?
I think, you know, let's.
I think, you know, let's yeah, let's, uh, why don't we hold them and bring it, you know, if somebody could make a note of that, then we can come back at the end of this second seg- segment and see if there are other requests and then we'll go to the board and see what the board wants to, uh, what has an interest in.
Thank you, Chris.
Mark, just so you know, Scott and I have done some of that research and we found some, some schools that have similar demographics that, that are outperforming us in some of these areas. So, uh, we, we can share those schools with you.
We can share that with you. We, we target a school in Palos Verdes and we target one in Clovis to kind of compare ourselves to. Cause they have somewhat similar or even more advantageous student bodies. And we want to, we want to make sure our kids are as competitive and academically or better. So we can share that with you.
Uh, Catherine.
Thank you, John and Scott. This is fantastic. Um, I, I have a question about, uh, the six period day. Um, and whether or not you have, either of you or both of you have surveyed the parents to find out what their um, tolerance for that would be if we went to a longer school day and, and if we've offered, you know, transportation, et cetera.
We, we have not yet surveyed parents because we know that, um, adding a period to the day, uh, has a lot of moving parts. Financial implications and, uh, so getting that cart too far out in front of a horse. We didn't think, at least from our, our school's perspective, was, was the wisest thing to do without guidance from the board. So, um, and I do know that the, from a student standpoint, um, there's, and even from the parent's standpoint, when we're asking parents about a particular, uh, elective replacement class such as avid, such as, um, an intervention class, there's always the discussion of keeping students invested in school through something that they, that really find success, that they really enjoy, that's really hands on. Um, where, where the stakes are a little bit lower versus, um, trying to provide remediation or, or support. Um, and that's always a very, very difficult choice. Most parents do opt for, um, having their student participate in, in the remediation. Um, and, and so, but it always feels like a sacrifice. So we know it's good for kids. We want to provide what's best for kids. It, it's really hard to, to balance that.
Sure, of course. Um, if, if you could, uh, find out what the number might be, um, and that information might be able to make its way to the board. Perhaps it's something we could at least have a conversation about.
And, and again, that, can somebody add that to the list of?
Yeah. So Catherine, can you tell me again what number specifically you're asking to see?
How much it would cost to add a teacher to an hour to the day?
Got it.
Not to one, this may not be one teacher. So
It's roughly a twenty percent staffing increase. So and then it would be extensive negotiation impact too, I would think.
Um, so Chris and then Eve and then back to Mark.
So, uh, quickly is at, at high school, is avid an A to G course?
Yeah, everything that's eligible with avid, uh, for A to G has been, um, submitted and approved.
Eve.
Yeah, this also has to be negotiated, I realize, but the early release Wednesday was going to be in, in time for students to engage in other things. And I wondered if that could balance the avid kit, students need for an elective as well as giving up their elective spot for avid.
I, I would say possibly it would depend on how we, we run those, uh, Wednesday afternoons. One of my concerns is always when we look at equity. Um, are we building it within the school day? Are we asking kids who have economic disadvantages or, or social disadvantage? Are we asking them to actually stay longer in the school day? So the, the more equitable system would be to provide that support within the actual, build it into the actual school day.
And that would be, that would be, yeah, the Wednesday afternoon.
If, if it's
Well, we don't know yet because it hasn't been negotiated.
It, it, yeah, could, could be, yeah, that's, I don't know what that, that would look like yet, but yes, I guess that would, would possibly be an opportunity there as well.
Just, just putting the thought out there.
Uh, Mark in the Maryland.
But just something for the future, maybe something to jot down with Chris's list. There, are, are there schools in the state or in the county or somewhere where the whole school's gone avid and thus allowing all, all the electives that we have to continue? Is that a good question?
Yeah. And just to clarify that, Mark, there's, um, as Scott was describing, there's incredible avid instructional strategies that are great for an entire school. However, the specific avid strategies that guide a student towards being university accepted are specific just to the elective. So think of it as kind of two separate pieces. Great instructional strategies that are solid for everybody. And then the avid elective though is specific to, let's keep working through the tutoring and the steps to get you university accepted.
Marilyn.
Thank you. If the, um, Mrs. McGrath, if the great, uh, avid strategies, if the, if they are great school wide, um, what would be the impact, financial impact, I guess, on, um, on the district of training? All of our middle school teachers and what is, to what extent, I guess, how big of a training is it to, um, to learn those strategies, one. And then, uh, my second comment would just be that all the things that we're commenting on and suggesting and thinking about here, we need to remember are all negotiated, negotiated items. Adding a, a period to the day. And we don't, we have not yet negotiated a Wednesday release. So those things remain to be seen.
Yeah, great point, Marilyn. Um, the financial commitment would be kind of, you could do it two directions. One is you could, um, continue doing what we've been doing, which Scott's doing a great job of, of keep bringing in layers and layers of people that have not received avid training over the years. And they, you know, participate in additional, you know, additional avid training. And then sometimes someone wants to go back for a refresher. The other way to do it would be to bring avid into the two middle schools and have trainers train everyone from the kind of mandatory instructional strategy training perspective. So, um, there's the kind of two directions to go. Uh, if we wanted to take a full avid instructional strategies, like those are the strategies that we're all going to create a common language, common understanding around, then I would recommend kind of strategy number two, you know, plan B, you bring in trainers to, for everyone to participate in. My experience, I think Scott will probably say the same is that the avid instructional strategies are strong. I, I, they've been around a long time and, uh, they're proven and it is a, a strong way to go for creating kind of common instructional strategies at a middle school.
Uh, Evelyn.
So Kim, those, those, you just sparked another question. So given that, what is, I guess, two questions. One would be uh, teacher buy-in. What method is better for, you know, teacher buy-in? The other thing is if the second method would be better, would, how would, how would that take place regarding cost and, and teacher training and, you know, folding that in into the middle school and high school, kind of re, reimagining and, and re-envisioning it.
Mm-hmm. It's a good question. Um, you know, plan A, I would say as you find people that are interested, as you keep, you know, talking to people about it, as you keep bringing in layer, 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 um, probably brings in teacher buy-in better than here's this training, everyone's doing it mandatory, right? You get, you know, a little bit of, uh, of the mix there. So if you're it, you get probably more teacher buy-in from the people that really want it. It's just at a slower pace with plan A, right? Plan B, mandatory, everyone's doing it. You might get less buy-in from some that were not interested or think they already have it or, right? There's all those components, but you're going to get a quicker pace, right? So, um, pros and cons to each strategy. Um, the commitment would be a financial commitment for sure. And it would be, I would recommend that you would want to consider that probably through LCAP as we know, first best instruction is your best strategy, right? For, um, for all students, right? If you have really solid first best instruction, you need a support system less and less. You'll always need a support system. But, you know, first best instruction is your best first strategy.
So I'm looking at the time and I'm, I know Chris has a quick comment he'd like to make. And then I'm going to suggest that we continue to move through the middle school data. Um, just because we only have the middle school and, and high school, um, teachers here for, excuse me, principals here for a chunk of time. Um, so Chris, just really quickly and then
Yes, thank you. Um, well, it sounds like, I'm just going to try to wrap this up a little bit myself. It sounds like the board has an interest in avid. However, I, I'm, I'm feeling like we're putting the cart before the horse here. Um, I think that, and the reason I'm saying that is I think there's a lot of interest in avid, but what I'm kind of hearing is questions related to shouldn't we, should we implement avid throughout our middle schools? And I'm not comfortable going down that road yet. I think that's, that's something that I would want to hear from the staff as a staff recommendation. Um, this, the middle school right now and what we're learning is the middle school already is trying, is working towards schools to watch. Now, if this is, if this is a way that we could help get us to schools to watch, because I think we've agreed on that, that's fine. I'm going to suggest, perhaps we want to know more about avid. But I think if, you know, before we go down the road of saying it's, it's great treat, teaching strategies, there may be other teaching strategies that are even better that we would want to look at. And, and that's, that's something I think that is more of the staff's, staff's role to bring us back recommendations for things, uh, to help us achieve our goal of, you know, schools to watch, equity, things like that. I would just leave that as a comment.
And it's my understanding that the middle school team is going through this visioning process. So perhaps at the end of that, that might be some of what they bring to you is their ideas for what might be the best approach.
And, and real quick to just to put a cap on this and make sure that, that I shared about where avid is now. We have avid at all at both middle schools and high schools. Uh, there is an avid elective section for all grade levels and, and it's highly successful. We've been, we've been really grateful. We continue to train San Luis Coastal teachers that want to go to the traditional three day professional development training. Even this year where our teachers are out of gas, we have almost twenty that have signed up for a summer avid training willingly. In our Kickstarter that we're offering, uh, we have three ninety minute sessions we're offering for teachers to attend. One is kind of go-to strategies for a strong start. One is called increasing rigor through collaborative structures. And another one is kind of an avid overview. So we are working on this ongoing. Uh, I, I have been called the avid district director for years now. Uh, I'm going to be working closely with Leslie O'Connor and his team as I kind of pass more of that torch to him and his team. So we'll be, we'll be having more ongoing conversations and, and we can share with the board ongoing.
Great. So pass it back to staff to continue through your presentation.
Sounds good. Um, as we've talked about before, um, you'll see the, um, you know, Los, Losos and Lambs, um, aspect scores here. This one's for English Language Arts. And, excuse me, as we've mentioned many times, we do have a gap between uh, our non-SEV students and our SEV students. So you can see there at Lambs, um, that if you're not socioeconomically disadvantaged, about, um, eighty-two, eighty-three percent of those students are meeting or exceeding the standard. But if you're socioeconomically disadvantaged or forty-four one year, forty-six another year. So, um, definitely an achievement gap there that needs to be addressed. When you look at loans, um, you see overall the achievement slightly lower. Um, however, there is, uh, much less of a gap, right? Socioeconomically disadvantaged students are, um, performing at a higher percentage, about fifty-six, fifty-seven percent. Uh, so still a gap, but less of a gap there. Also, you have a, a much higher percentage of socioeconomically disadvantaged, um, at loans versus Lambs. So, uh, lots of things to talk about on these graphs, but those are, you know, just some key things to think about. Addressing the achievement gap, I would say is a key thing for San Luis Coastal to keep working on. Not unusual for all, uh, school districts, probably exist everywhere, but, um, but it needs to be a continued focus for sure. With math, uh, you see something, you know, pretty similar here as well, about a thirty-ish percent gap. Okay, A reading, um, Fastbridge, you'll remember you're going to, uh, you've heard a lot from Rick Mayfield and Laura Storm about, um, using this assessment system for a really unified, uh, K twelve system. So this is, um, you know, just that first initial look at it. I would say that the spring scores, uh, that were able to be administered, um, this year would be a beginning of a baseline there for us to continue to look at. I think there's a lot more to come there and, um, I won't be here to do it with you, but I would encourage you to keep your eye and, and focused on what Aries Analytics and what Fastbridge can do for us as a data, um, analytics tools for San Luis Coastal. I think those are going to be, uh, big factors for us. So let me move here, um, into some, um, EL data. So here, if you're looking at middle school EL status, so you can see this one is the combined scores here Laguna and Los Osos Middle School here. So you see the blue represents English only. You've got a thousand-ish here. You have red being an English language, uh, learner here about a hundred and five. RFEP, you're looking at about a hundred and sixty. I would say there used to be more of an issue of students not being re-designated. That system has really, uh, changed and been improved. It's not, uh, an issue anymore for them to kind of sit in the not re-designated status. Um, so that kind of gives you a picture of what you're talking about here. So you're looking at, uh, English language learners about eightish percent there. If you look here, kind of long-term EL status, these are all students that we would always want to have an extra focus on. Um, why is it that they've stayed in that not being re-designated, uh, state? So when you combine it here, sixth, seventh, eighth grade, um, it, it tells a story here where if you have four students here that have been, uh, EL for nine plus years, keep in mind that there's usually really extenuating circumstances, right? You're only talking about four kiddos there. Um, seven to eight years, you're talking seventy-two. There's, that to me would be of all of these, that would be the focus there to look at. What are we talking about here? How have those students stayed in that status for that long? Then you can see the numbers there. Uh, this seven to eight year group, I would say i- if needs some attention and needs our focus there. Otherwise, in general, students are progressing uh, through being an English language learner, you should have, you know, think about, picture yourself showing up in Japan, right? And not having English, it's going to take time. There's a logical, um, process and time that takes place to, um, read, to write, to speak, especially in an academic, uh, setting. Then we broke it down, um, by the school sites. There were some requests to break it down a little further. So, um, I won't look at this, you know, i- in detail with you, but you can see kind of the, the difference there between the EL status. You'll find it Los Osos Middle School. And here's EL long-term just at Los Osos Middle School. Okay. And then you find something similar here for Lambs. And notice here that seven to eight year, there's that, that number there that when I look at what would need our focus, that's the piece probably that needs our attention. Overall, good progress, making solid progress. When you're looking at something that to continue to work on, that would be a piece there. Do I see Evelyn's hand?
Sorry. Yes, Evelyn and Chris.
Oh, sorry. Okay, muted. Um, Kim, looking at that data, when it, um, you know, and you pointed out the number of, of the fifty. And even though it's showing up on middle school, it's really elementary, right? Because the students are landing here and so should our, I mean, even though, you know, she said this is the number to be concerned about. But I guess we really need to backwards map it. I mean, to really how the students are arriving at the middle school in this way. I, I don't know. Am I looking, thinking about that correctly?
Yeah, you're thinking exactly right. Um, you know, to John's point earlier, they, they only get them two years, right? So, um, yes, in some ways it's a picture of our whole system, uh, that they landed there. Now, some of them could be, um, you know, that it's a very logical sequence that they, they're making, you know, decent progress and it's just, um, you know, that, that growth just needs to complete. But yeah, I do think you're right that it's a, you know, it's an overall system focus.
And Chris.
Yeah, I have a, I guess what I would call a curiosity question. So is there a difference between our EL students in the city and on the coast in terms of uh, levels of poverty, parental, parental support, things like that, that are causing these, these like little, these differences and looks at the two schools. I'm just curious. And again, it may not be a question we want to answer now, but it, I'm, I'm just wondering if we have almost two different EL populations depending on where they live.
I'll chime in briefly and say, as far as I can tell, not tremendously. The coast has a few more newcomer students, students that have been in, in California US schools for a shorter period of time. But when you look at the socioeconomic status of our EL students, whether they be newcomers or, or long-term English learners, I don't see vast differences between the coast and in town, to be honest. John and Carl, you might be able to chime in on this more so than I.
Yeah, I don't really know the, the Laguna population, but I know that we are all over the place with ours and you know, I don't know that there's a significant difference.
Yeah, I, I know Laguna's population quite well, and I've been looking at moral base recently, of course. But at Laguna, I would say of our 60-ish kids, all but maybe one or two are low socioeconomic.
I think Ellen had a question and then perhaps Mark.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm wondering with our, I love, I liked the, when we were talking previously, I didn't have a chance to make the comment about Avid offering the Avid training to teachers who wish to take it, because I think that just doing that would provide opportunities to, to be able to seamlessly incorporate some of the strategies and skills into all the classrooms that could address some of these, would, could benefit some of these EL students who are not part of the Avid population. And could help to, to give them opportunities to advance in ways they might not otherwise experience. Scott, I see you raise your hand.
Yeah, I should mention that, that last year at Laguna, we kicked off, Avid has a specific middle school course called Avid Excel, which is developed for students predominantly who are long-term English learners. And the program is a two-year program, basically designed for seven and eight. It can be altered to use at six, seven, eight schools. So that kids who come in who have not been re-designated have, you know, really specific English language strategies, kind of under the Avid umbrella, so to speak. So that before they leave eighth grade, they are proficient in English and they're able to move on to high school without having EL status as a label. We started it this year with Kathy Ahern, and she's amazing, but it was a pandemic year, and so it was difficult. But she did a great job. Carl has a new teacher at his school site, and he's going to be kicking it off similarly. So we're, we're really excited about the opportunity to, to, to work differently and in a good way with our long-term English learners at both our middle schools, just FYI.
But just to follow up quickly, does that mean the goal is to ARFEP these students before they get to high school or?
That is the, that is the number one goal.
Okay, great. Great, thank you.
So, and then before we move to Mark, I just wanted to apologize to Ellen. I didn't realize earlier that you had bounced down off my screen. And so I didn't see your box. So if I didn't see your hand during that last Avid conversation, I apologize. It was great fun of Zoom. Um, Mark.
Thank you. Just real quickly, I'm, I'm just wondering if we're at the point where we've, we can see that we need maybe an agenda item or a Friday memo, definitely on Avid, but also on the SEDs 40% plus. And, and you know, what we're doing down there. If you'll add that to the list, Chris, I would appreciate it.
Okay.
And, and just, just as an intersection to that, you gave me a thumbs up on the strategic direction. Strategic direction, number one, first two bullets, it's all about this. That's what this is. That is what you guys gave me as a direction. So that is our summer work is to put together a board presentation calendar that allows us to then bring this forward so that we're talking, we're continuing to talk about this. And Avid is a, is an important piece, but only one piece of several pieces that we're doing. This isn't, this, there's no magic bullet here. There's just a, there's just a series of supports and strategies that we're working on. And I just wanted to kind of get that out there.
Great. Back to you, Kim.
Okay, great. So let's look at student engagement, right? So lots of, lots of engagement going on, thinking about, we know that when kids are involved in other things outside of just going to class, that it hooks them into school, right? So right now, it looks like at Lambs about 32%. You've got some good sports going on, nine extracurricular clubs, two good competitions, and, you know, good opportunities. You remember hearing about student voice. When you look at Lambs Youth Truth Survey, when we're thinking about engagement, I'll start with strength, belonging, peer collaboration, culture. Interesting, highest in four years, right? So the culture of kids feeling connected, that sort of thing, and relationships as well. Two areas to continue to grow in engagement. Kids at Laguna, we've got to keep working on them feeling like they're engaged, involved, you know, really, you know, connected to their academic learning and then academic challenge as well. So are they engaged? Do they feel pushed at an appropriate level? Two areas to grow in there. And I don't know, John or Scott, if you have anything. Oh, I think I see Mark's hand too.
Um, Mark? Oh, you're on mute.
You'd think you know by now. Thanks for this. This is just so thought-provoking, this stuff. It's great. When I look at three, three boys' sports and 40% of the students, three girls, and all this extracurricular stuff. If at some point, Chris, again, if I could, if I would be interested in seeing the breakdown by whatever we're seeing, all students. Wealthy SED and Hispanic, just, just to see what that kind of participation is. Thanks.
Great. Here at Loam, she'll see something similar, about 40% of students, teams, eight extracurricular clubs, an academic competition, and also good opportunities there for student voice. And when you're looking at engagement at Loam's, areas of strength there, you'll see some similar ones, right? Belonging, peer collaboration, culture still improving, relationships actually higher than it's ever been. And notice similar areas of growth, right? Making sure students feel engaged, part of it, and they're challenged appropriately. So next steps here, you'll notice, I love this quote here. An authentic middle school vision communicates clearly, but commonly agreed upon simply powerful definitions to those that have responsibility for translating that into a reality. And so the group is definitely at that place of creating that common understanding, that acceptance, so then the actions can continue to work in a unified manner. So the next steps there, continue with that middle school reform process. Adopt middle school vision, mission statements, and then provide recommendations to Dr. Prater for the board to see. And I think to Chris's point earlier, probably a good point of, you know, let those recommend good decisions about direction. That finishes at middle school. So anything else there?
So before I go to your question, Mark, I just wanted to, because I'm assuming the board is going to ask this question, so I'm going to ask it. Eric, timing-wise of when the team is going to have their final recommendations for, for you and the board, you're thinking by the 2022, 2023 school year?
Yeah, so this is, the timing of this, as I think Mrs. Roger mentioned, is really important because a lot of the things that I think need to happen at the middle level regarding schedules, electives, opportunities for flexible programming, involve collective bargaining. So I met with the Scott Steele, who's helping facilitate this with John and Carl and the team. And the goal is to have it completed and brought to me somewhere in November, December. So we sunshine probably in January, February for the 22, 22 collective bargaining cycle. So you can expect these, these, the, the vision and the recommendations to me to be completed by somewhere in November slash, and then I'll bring it to the board in probably December is what we're thinking right now.
Thank you. Mark.
Just one question, answerable in the future. Think I've asked this before. Have we started to involve parents in this yet? Is there part, is there a plan to involve parents in this?
Okay, Mark, I, Mark, I so, I so appreciate that. And, and you know, you're, you're so on it. But that was one of the comments I was just about to make before I clicked off. And that is, part of the next steps also involves our parent leader groups. It involves our student leader groups. So part of Schools to Watch isn't just staff, but it's also parent, community stakeholders, and student voice. We have the structures in place to do this. And part of what John and Carl will be doing in the fall, starting in August, September, is they'll bring on board to the you'll be seeing this. This is why I'm talking about it now, because I don't want you to not have a context for this in the fall. So you'll see and hear quite a lot of discussion around middle school reform and modifications, desires in September, October. And I wanted you to have a, an advanced heads up on that. So you now know as, as much as I do, as it relates to this process. It's a little scary because we have given away this trust, if you will, and, and we honor that trust to the middle school leaders and the, and the staff committees. Now we're going to take one step further and offer that up to the parents and the students. I have complete confidence that will, the recommendations will be extraordinary. And I just wanted you to be aware that we are bringing in those other stakeholder groups.
And Dr. Prater, if I may, the, from Schools to Watch, one of the foundational ideas in Schools to Watch is that all stakeholders embrace the vision and mission of the middle school. And so our first step was really to create that vision and mission, and, and this is the first time the board is seeing what we've created. So from here, what are, are our next steps? Before our parents get it, we've really got to adopt that vision and mission statement as, yes, this is our, our district's vision and mission. And then we, we need the parents to understand it, our teachers to understand it, and our students to understand it. And really, that really becomes what we do. And then from there, all of the other work that, that we've got to do to continue to reform our middle schools is much easier when everybody understands, yes, this is what we mean when we talk about middle.
So I'm looking at, yeah.
Before we transition to the high school section, I'd like to sort of wrap up a couple of things here, if I may. So we had, we had several kind of questions and requests for information from board members. I'd like to first of all know, you know, I'm curious who was taking those down. And then I'd like those, if we could review those really quickly and ask Dr. Prater if those are things that he's already planning on folding into his presentation to us. And then if there's anything that's not, and anything that's germane to what we're talking about, the board can see whether that's something that, that they have further interest in exploring. So Dr. Prater, can you talk about, Sir Adrian, maybe you can ask those?
Yeah, so, so I wrote my notes down on paper. I'm wondering if Becca typed them and if she wants to share her screen. If that would be useful. If not, I'll just read them off the paper.
Um, no, you should.
Okay.
I mean, I can type them, but with my own notes.
Yeah, no problem. So I captured one, two, three, four, five items. And it sounds like perhaps staff is doing some of this already. So one of the questions was to compare our middle schools with other middle schools across the state, so not just within the county, but across the state. Mark's sticking his head. I didn't capture that adequately.
Sorry, really, really close. So we are in a certain, certain group of districts, basic aid, high wealth. And so there are another group, and I, I know John and everybody often looks at those. I'm just wondering if I could see that, or we could see that data as well. Great to see we're the best in the county. How are we doing with comparable school districts? So, so that's, that's one request for information, Dr. Prater. Is that something that, that is, that would be something that you would present in this? As you're talking about this with is this, or is this a separate request that I, that we need to go back to the board and say, is this something the board has an interest in?
Yeah, well, you know what, I, I, I am not sure what data sets I intend to use when we present to the board in the fall on this middle school effort. This is certainly a comparison of how we're doing, not just locally, but across the state. I, you know, I, I can imagine that being part of what we do. So this comparison, especially as, as it relates to EL success, you know, the academic piece, as well as the programmatic piece, which is Avid programs and so forth, I think would be part of, of this presentation in the fall. So I, I don't intend to squeeze my group to get that to you this week. So I see that being part of what you're going to see next, next school year.
And it sounds like that's fine with Mark. He's giving a thumbs up.
And you know what, Adrian, it needs to be fine with everybody.
Oh, yes, thank you, sir.
And just, it sounds like, it sounds like, Dr. Prater, you've got that one covered. What's the next? Oh, Marilyn? And I see Marilyn has her hand up.
Yeah, I just would like to be sure that when, when that comparison is made, that we are compared to low-wealth, basic aid districts, which we are a part of as opposed to high wealth.
You mean like Palos Verdes?
And Palo Alto.
Okay, so that, that takes care of number one. I'm trying to move us along here. That's why.
So number two is the cost to add an hour to the day or a period to the day. So Kim had said, you know, back of the envelope is a 20% staffing increase. I didn't know if the board was happy with that or if they wanted a more specific dollar figure.
And I see, Dr. Prater, I imagine this is something that would be something we would cover in negotiations.
Yeah, I'm not even sure what the recommendations will be. And when we discuss these, these cost items, I want it to be tied to information given to the board in closed session, because it's tied to our bargaining strategy, right? So I think this is a little bit premature, but I can guarantee you that discussion and those cost points will be a full, comprehensive discussion with the board when we start sunshining what we want as priorities as a district. So that's why we're front-loading middle school core principals' vision, mission, so that you understand when the recommendations come your way, and then we translate that to cost. You'll understand what's at stake, what we're trying to do. So you'll have a complete view of those costs come, come November, December.
So it sounds like that one's going to be handled in our closed session when we discuss negotiations. Adrian, what's the next?
So the next one was whole, like, the idea of taking Avid to a whole school level training of teachers versus, to make it a part of the instructional day versus specific pullout to talk about university. Am I capturing? I don't know if I captured that one quite exactly, but that was where the conversation was going.
I think the question was about full site-wide, staff-wide Avid instructional strategies versus, versus the kind of volunteer, kind of moving it forward in that way. I would recommend, I think, to Chris's suggestion that the board's always going to be focused on great instructional strategies. And then if you keep that as your, as your recommendation, your, you know, vision, then allowing staff to figure out what that looks like is probably a good move.
Is everybody okay with that one, with Kim's suggestion?
Seeing heads nodding, thumbs up.
Okay, good.
Yeah, so the, wanting to look at engagement data, not holistically, but broken out into SED students and EL students for both middle schools.
Dr. Prater, is that something that we typically would have? Is that something we would typically have in terms of our youth, our youth truth survey data? And would that be more appropriate to come when we discuss the youth truth survey?
Yeah, so that is actually, I'm curious about that too. So I appreciate the, the question. And so I'm meeting with Jimmy Simpson from Youth Truth to talk about next year, next week. So part of what I will do is I'll add this as part of the next week. So part of what I will do is I'll add this as part of the analysis that I'd like to see broken out. So yes, they can do a whole lot with that data. We're just scratching the surface of what that tool can offer us, which is why I love this conversation, because it, it can only help us understand it more deeply. So yeah, I, I can break this down. I will have, I'll talk to Jimmy about how we can do that, or if they can do it for us. So you know, that'll be part of my conversation. But again, I, I can't, I, I don't see myself giving that to you now. I see that being something I, I bring up in the fall as part of a more comprehensive way to address strategic directions, one and two. Specifically, the two, first two bullets under one and the first two bullets under two, which talks about how are our kids actually engaging in learning, how are they feeling? And what's their, are their performance markers telling us? So yeah, that'll come as part of our presentation package.
Thank you. Adrian, were there any others?
There was one more, and I apologize to the board. I am not completely understanding my note to myself. So I think it was something from Mark, so I'm just going to ask him. It was something else about socio-economically disadvantaged students. I had written here 40%. Do you remember, do you recall any other additional requests that you had about that?
I think Dr. Prater captured it already. We're great. Thank you.
So that's all I have.
Good job, Adrian, because it's tough.
Okay, so we, oh, Marilyn has one final question.
Well, it's not a question, but just before we move on to high school, I wanted to note, because I wrote down that I thought that the vision statement for middle school was excellent. And that I could see that there was a lot of work that went into capturing the vision and the verbiage that was used. It was just a really well-done statement, and I wanted, I didn't want to leave without noting that.
Thank you.
Marilyn, I so appreciate that. I feel the same way. Well done, John and Carl and the group that worked on that.
So we'll move on to high school, and yeah.
Before we do, we did receive some public comment that I need to read. So if every, if we could just take a moment so I can do that, I'd appreciate it.
Are you on mute? Chris.
Yeah, what, what happened is I used, never mind. Anyway, this is from Lena Egan. "I look forward to hearing more study sessions on the district plans to prepare our secondary students for the jobs careers of the future. Regionally, reach 2030 is a 10-year plan to transform the quality of life on the Central Coast. Sustainable, inclusive economy with opportunities for all residents to enjoy productive, fulfilling lives. Its goal is, quote, "15,000 good-paying jobs by 2030." Vandenberg Space, Forest Base, and Offshore Windvilles are part of this. Sandless Coastal Education Foundation has made a tremendous impact in just a few years. "I hope the district and the foundation can expand the opportunity task force to include reimagined summer experiences such as participate in Silicon Valley Education Foundation's Elevate Math, a nationally-recognized middle school math program because algebra is a critical gateway to STEM careers. Expand Cal Poly's Learn by Doing Summer Lab Camp Program beyond Pacheco fifth and sixth graders by funding the Cal Poly instructors and materials and meals and transportation of students to or from designated schools. And three, adapt Paso Robles High School Field Studies Collaborative undergraduate research at Cal Poly with funding for insurance and stipends for our students, Cal Poly professors, and if the program is credit-bearing, district teachers for administering the program. I've also been impressed with the district's breadth of CTE pathway offerings, and the work to ensure CTE courses also receives UCCSU A to G designation. I look forward to seeing how the CTE program grows and adapts to the jobs careers of the future." And that's it. Thank you very much, Lena. Adrian, thank you.
Yeah, so we're moving on to high school. I, I, we've had a lot of questions for the middle school group already. I'm, I'm wondering if the board will have any additional questions for middle school group, or if we can let them go about their day. And yeah, okay, so if people need to leave from that group, go ahead, and then we're going to move into high school.
Thank you all.
And thanks, guys. And Adrian, if I could just for a moment, or Mr. Unger, if I could just for a moment, you, the board may have seen this person's name. Her name is Jennifer Alton, and she's been participating in virtually every single board meeting, every single study session that we've had publicly for the last year, maybe 16 months. And you might wonder who she is. Well, she's actually my Rotary sister in Sandless, Abyspo, and she's also a local attorney in town. And I just wanted to, I meant to introduce her to you formally last, last time we met. But, but I just wanted to just give a shout out to, to Jennifer, who isn't even, she's not a parent in our district, but she's just a, just a committed learner. And so part of the Rotary Education kind of liaison. And so she's just rolled up her sleeves to learn about what's going on in K-12 public education. And I just give her a big shout out. She's a great person. Jennifer, you want to come on and say hello?
I, I wonder if she dropped off.
Okay, well.
She was here, but I don't, I don't see her on the list now.
Well, if you are wondering, that's who she is. So go ahead, Adrian.
Well, I'm going to just pass it right back to Kim to talk about.
So time to talk about high schools. So I know that Jeff had Walliter's here. Leslie's trying to pop on if he can. Obviously, they have a lot going on today. So, so we will talk about high schools next. So when you start with kind of why, you know, why is high school so important? You think about this key developmental time, right? It's that time where we're working to launch students into an adult life, really looking at college and career. I would bring your attention to the word "and." I think when we were in school, it was kind of "or," right? It was kind of one or the other. And we don't have to have "or" anymore, the key word being "and." Think about that time of maturity, think about that time of working towards independence. High school does have a lot of boxes, so to speak, that you have to make sure you work within. Graduation requirements, A to G requirements. It's like everything changes when you have credits, is the way I think of it. Extracurricular opportunities, CIF requirements, et cetera. An amazing, exciting time for students and, you know, complicated you know, time as well. When you think about what do we do currently, so obviously we have three different high schools to consider. So we have Morro Bay High School, Slow High School, and Pacific Beach. So when you look at Morro Bay and Slow High, you're looking at a lot of similarities. You'll see the bullets, you know, with a lot more similarities than not. You have core classes that students go through. We've made great strides in every course possibly being A to G approved. A variety of CTE courses. You will see less offerings at Morro Bay simply because you have a much smaller population, right? You have to have enough students to be able to enter into those courses and pathways. You have avid, you have support systems, you have AP dual enrollment. You have a variety of elective offerings, extracurriculars. You have, you know, visual and performing arts, athletics. You have an advisory time that's built in a little more at Slow High, but you have four-year planning, you have coordination with the middle schools, a lot of similarities. I won't talk to extensive about Pacific Beach, because I know that y'all have a real passion and, and you understand Pacific Beach well. But it's much more flexible scheduling, much more individualized, much smaller campus, where teachers are really, really hands-on with each student, helping them through, get through credits individually and looking at their individual circumstances. I know you were all at the, you know, very touching ceremony where it's kind of a demonstration of how individualized things are that those students, you know, just like our equity work said. I think of students at Pacific Beach, we need to hold on to their hand and walk them right through the door. And they have a lot of potential when they have that extra support. So there's advisory program, Questa partnerships also, and then even that individualized attention. When you look at special ed, you'll see really similar to what we talked about at, at the middle schools, working towards that full inclusion, co-taught classes that we know when students have that access and that ability to see rigorous opportunities, it's, you know, excellent for each one of those students. So graduation, I want to talk to you here about kind of graduation rates. And we have incredibly high graduation rates. You can see kind of, you know, 96-ish percent students. I'm going to see if I can get this a little bigger. Not able to see that a little bit better. You can see there English learners at 89%, you can see homeless at 84%. Socioeconomically disadvantaged, you know, still at 92. So, you know, a really small gap, but I would say our graduation rate's extremely strong. College enrollment. So let's look at this one. And you have, you know, we, we show this data to you each year. So I know this is not new data for you to look at. But remember how we talked about that you can see where these, these lines down here on the bottom, the green and the orange, they flip-flop right there, and that's directly related to Questa Promise Grant. So things, you know, changed, students became more attracted to a two-year institution like Questa when that became free for students for two years. So no doubt that that had an impact. And you can see there that when you're looking at all institutions that we have in the high 70s of students there that are enrolled.
Kim, before you jump into the pie charts, I, I'm thinking Evelyn has a question about the graduation rate data that.
Before you do that, can I just, can I add something, please? There was some of this data that is in the packet that was attached to Board Docs, but I've asked, I've asked Mandy if she would attach the slide deck to the Friday packet. So we should be able to get a, get a full slide deck.
Will do.
Uh, Kim? Oh, sorry, you know, back on the graduation rate, those are incredible scores. I, I do have a question about when we're looking at the graduation rate. Is this of students who remain in school, you know, through 12th grade? Or does it also include students who perhaps drop out before, you know, that 12th year? Does that, how does the state look at that?
Yeah, it includes students that dropped out. The interesting thing is the way the state looks at it is even if they, let's say they're a junior and they transfer to another school even, it still tracks them as looking at what we did. So yes, if they dropped out as the, you know, a junior or something, it definitely counts, that counts against us here.
Thanks.
I, I think I captured your question, Mark? Or you still have one?
I, I actually have another one that's related. Thank you, Evelyn. My, my question as well. When we do have somebody that, that drops out, do we track them as to why? There was a, why they left early?
Counselors would have exited reviews with the students to figure out what's going on, unless in the strange circumstance happens once in a million that, that they're just, you know, hard to capture, hard to find. But that's such a rare exception.
Okay.
Okay, so we talked about this one. So when you're looking at college enrollment of socioeconomically disadvantaged versus non-socioeconomically disadvantaged, so you'll see that economically disadvantaged being this maroonish kind of color, and you can see that over time. And you look at not socioeconomically disadvantaged here. And this is from our student tracker. I know, I think it was Mark, it asked about student tracker information. You see that as an expense within LCAP. So this is enrollment during that first fall, you know, immediately after high school. And where do you find students? So you'll see there that we've had, you know, decent improvement over time. You know, somewhat level, but you know, it's starting to improve a little. And you'll see again a slight gap there. But when you look at where are they going in the, in the fall, you've got, you know, 60-ish percent versus 80-ish percent. Okay, when you look at EL status, you'll see kind of, this should kind of ring a bell with middle school. So this one combines all three of our high schools, and you're looking at English-only, about 79% of the population. And then the English language status here for an EL student, you can see in the red there about 5 to 6%. And then RFEP, you can see you've got about 345. So that's, that's great to see. That means they've made the progress needed, where you've got, you know, you can just kind of see 2,000-ish there, 140 here. Okay, helps you see that population. Catherine, maybe?
Just excuse me, could we just, I just want to ask a question going backwards. Maybe you don't have to use the slide. But I did want to ask Dr. Prater, it looked like in 2016, our students who are socio-economically disadvantaged started on an uptick. And I was wondering if there's anything that Dr. Prater could point to, maybe in terms of changes in instructional notions about how we were working with those students. Is there anything that comes to mind?
Yeah, sorry, go ahead, Kim.
No, just one little thing is just remember Promise Grant, those, you know, that definitely change things right in there. But go right ahead.
Now, are, are you talking about the, the student tracker piece, in particular after high school? Or are you talking about just overall in general?
Looking at the, I'm looking at college enrollment, SED, non-SEDs, and then going up on 2016. Actually, 2015, it seems to like starting, starting that upward trend. And I was wondering if there was anything that we were doing differently then, where we?
Yeah, I, where, where, where I, where I go just right off the bat is our, you know, the, the intentional work right around that time in developing CTE, developing more, more clear pathways, more levels of engagement. It was during those years that we started doing some real, real intentional work at the high schools around math intervention and the CTE pathways. I think we hired some incredible new teachers at both high schools. And I just think it is, it is that work as, as well as our, our intentional efforts to roll up our sleeves and get, and listen to kids and try to develop our people around what the kids are saying they want. And as you know, it's a work in progress. But I think organizationally, we're focused on the right things. I'd like to see higher levels of, of success and engagement there. But I think we're, we're making progress, and I feel, I feel like we're on the right track.
Love it. Thank you.
Okay, so we looked at this one, continuing here. So one of the things we always want to be careful of is also kind of long-term ELs when we're looking at the high school. So you can see here, if you combine all of the high schools here, you have, you know, that, remember it was seven, eight years at the middle school. So of course it turns into that, that nine years there at the high school, right? So to Evelyn's point earlier, and you know, part of the system is that it's, there's some that have stayed in there. So when we look at that 70-ish in the middle schools, that we have this group here, combined across the district that we need to keep our eye on. When you look at Slow High, you can see this just breaks it down, and this, it's the same data. Instead, it just breaks it down per school site. So you've got Slow High here, where you've got English-only is about 1,200 students. And EL, you've got basically 100 students. When you're looking at Morro Bay, you see about 690 and about 33 EL students there. And so when you're looking at long-term, when you divide that up, you've got about 76 students there at Slow High that are in that nine-plus years. And when you're checking Morro Bay, you see about 20%. So comparing apples to apples, that kind of breaks it down a little bit there. Slow High's there, Morro Bay's there. Okay, so let's move on here to kind of graduation requirements. I know this is part of what you were asking about is students that are on track versus credit deficient. So when you think about how are they getting to graduation? So when you think about how are they getting to graduation, if you look at just at math. Uh let me walk you through this a little bit. You've got, if I'm at that first blocks, ninth grade students. About ninety-six, ninety-seven percent are on track. So you've only got three percent thirteen kids, right? So you can really focus on those thirteen kids. Um remember that, keep in mind um graduation requirements. And you've got A to G requirements. So this one's just looking at graduation for math only. So then the tenth grade year, if the those thirteen students didn't fix what needed to be fixed from, say, passing algebra. Then it it goes into combining that, right? So we would offer them summer school, we would offer them additional courses, we would offer them interventions. Et cetera. So it's either those thirteen students, some of them may have not. Uh got themselves out of those weeds, and then additional ones are added here, tenth grade. So you can see the huge majority, over ninety percent every year, are on track for that, and then that's what. Uh counselors, principals, uh teachers start diving in to help those students tremendously. So when you look at the same for English, you see something similar there, three percent jumps up the sophomore year. Uh ten percent, three percent, always above ninety. So when you break it down specifically, you're gonna see a little bit higher um percentage there for students that are off track at Moro Bay. Meaning they failed the course, right? If you look here more more they for English. You can see those uh broken down there, uh and then for some reasons, low highs. Oh, no, I'm sorry. I said earlier that those were combined. The first two were slow high, next two were more of it. Okay, so we'll dive into uh social emotional learning at the high schools. I know some of the um high school reps are here. Anything to add at this point?
Not yet, no, unless there's any questions.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. So social emotional learning at the um high schools, obviously, it's a key time for kids socially, it's a key time for them emotionally as well. So there's um, you know, strategies going on for multiple levels. So one is kind of school-wide language. Um working towards kids' growth mindset, working on their emotional well-being. There is a health class that goes. Uh really detailed standards around social health, emotional health, decision-making, et cetera. Um school counselors, as you know, lead efforts to have SEL into the school day. Um there's uh specific competencies around self-awareness, around social awareness, relationships, self-management. Decision-making, et cetera. We do have care teams. Um I will tell you that Shelley Benson this year too. Even in this interesting time we've been in, has um, you know, really focused on what activities and and interventions can be incorporated. And then tier three, thinking about that small percentage of students that need things above and beyond. Uh marriage, family therapist, family advocate, school psychologist, et cetera. So something else to think about, kind of the foundation's impact. Um Talina's letter earlier, the Opportunity Task Force. Um you know, does have that focus on how do we help remove those barriers for kiddos? Um so that they can get to their college career um goals and dreams there. So looking at sponsoring SAT college application fees for avid students and exploring um strategies there for mentorships and scholarships. Um supporting CTE trades, um the foundation has jumped in for PAC Beach. And then, of course, teacher grants, student grants, um to say, you know, how can we empower you? What is it that you need? And the foundations, uh you know, already been started there, it adding in opportunities there. So when we think about vision, kind of forward-thinking here, um you know, here's some of the ideas that uh the group really brainstormed is. Thinking about just be bold, be visionary. I'm excited about Leslie's role and what he will do to help focus on uh secondary schools. Um building that student agency, that connection, keeping that balance with social, emotional learning and rigorous opportunities. I think balance is one of the things that I think it was interesting to hear from Roland. We want to have challenging, rigorous opportunities. We can't do it at the expense of students' mental health, right? And we have to be careful about that balance for kids. Um we want to challenge every single individual kid, right? High achievement for each one of those kids and an opportunity for each one. Um blended learning, you know, I know we've had these discussions about dual enrollment opportunities, what's Questa's role? Uh what kind of access can we have? What can we be do to be creative? Can we learn from these kind of, you know, are there silver linings to come from this uh interesting situation we've been in this year? Uh flexible hours is something I know that may make some people uneasy, but when you think about. A student today, we we are kind of in a traditional box of, you know, kind of eight to three kind of box. Um there are opportunities before, after, and evenings, and weekends, and in times that this pandemic has shown us. Um that kids can access things at all sorts of times. So working towards that flexibility in those hours and. And, you know, campuses being available longer to students. Um those quest opportunities we've talked about, acceleration, even across different subject areas, across different courses. I think we need to keep exploring what can that look like for kids. Um locations, it's also interesting to think about. We have kind of this traditional box that we fit in, right? If you you walk in this door, you go right here, but virtual learning opens up the possibility to learn things from all different areas. Um job connections to me is a really big one. Think about what internships could we offer students? How could we kind of open their eyes and open their experiences, make things that they're learning more relevant? Um the integration of courses, and what I mean by that is um think about how business relates to statistics. Right? Or think about how geometry relates to construction. When you integrate and put some of those together, it light bulbs go off for kids. So I think we need to keep focusing on how can we create more out of the box, less traditional offerings? But that could really create curiosity and interest with students. Um there's, you know, ideas around, could there be kind of a culminating project? You know, the exit interview kind of thing of what's this, you know, what's this piece at the end that. Um focuses on some of the non-technical skills we've talked about earlier, right? Talking about. How do we make sure we're teaching kids perseverance and grit and um critical thinking and creativity? And then always looking at how do we keep modernizing our curriculum? If we're um, you know, stuck reading and doing the exact same thing we've done for forty years, like, you know, shame on us. We gotta keep looking at, um how do we make it modernized, valuing the great pieces that have been there a long time, but but. Keep grabbing attention, right? Keep engaging kids in in modern opportunities. So that is the kind of our closure there. Happy to answer any more questions or comments, and there's other people here that can help do that as well.
Great, thank you so much, Kim. Um looking at the time, I'd I'd ask the group that we spend, you know, ten, fifteen minutes. With questions and discussion on this, and then we'll take a quick five-minute break, and then we'll move into the rest of our um agenda. If that works for everyone. Okay, I'm not seeing anybody being totally upset about that, so that's what we're gonna work under, and I know Eve has a question and Chris has a question.
Hi, I love all this. It it everything points to equity, it really does. Um and the, and specifically, this was unfamiliar to me, the acronym CASL. Do you call it castle? I mean, is that how you refer to it, first of all? And then um I love the uh competencies of the helping develop those character traits, really. Responsibility and good relationships and all of that, and I just wondered if we could do. A more expanded focus on that. For for instance, is that something that the counselors are hired to teach? Or would it be taught by teachers? Um those are very important. Right now, we had had a a discussion about civic discourse and so forth, and. I'm just trying to find a place where some of the things we've already discussed can fit in and make more connections. So is castle the way you say it, first of all?
Yeah, I think so. Uh it's um, this is like a California collaborative uh for academic, social, emotional learning. So um that is, you know, this big group that, yes, counselors are connected with.
I see, California SEL, hey, yeah, that's right, okay. Um so the question was that it, are the counselors specifically hired to further these things here? Responsibility, relationship, all the, all those good character traits.
Yeah, it's a great question, Eve, because I think we have to think of it a little broader than that. Um Diane can jump into that, but I think we have to think about it being the responsibility of every single person. It can't just rely on counselors only. And so uh every, I would say even beyond teacher, every human on campus has to think about, you know. How do we keep an eye on students' social development, their emotional development, their academic development? And it can't be just on the shoulders of um, you know, a small handful of counselors. It needs to be incorporated into everything that we do, you know. Teaching those non-technical skills, including things like self-management, self-direction, those executive functioning kind of skills. Are things that you'll see within um within classrooms, and we have to ensure that everyone stays connected to all three of those.
And the school-wide, district-wide parent interaction and trainings that we've talked about, the parents also. And would it be a training? Could it be a district-wide training of some sort?
Mm-hmm, yeah, when you're thinking from a parent perspective, it could be um offering kind of SEL opportunities and parent education. Sounds good. Thank you.
Chris, do you have a question or a comment?
Well, you know, no, I just was going to say.
You were saying we should move it along?
Well, I saw, I saw Eve's hand up, but I wasn't sure if you saw Eve's hand.
Oh, got it.
When you, when we take the break that we make it about ten minutes.
Okay, we can do that. Get two thumbs up for Ellen. Does anybody have any other questions or comments? Evelyn does.
Okay, I remembered to unmute myself. Um yeah, this um, Kim, I I I have a little bit of a. A confusion. Um and I don't know if it's um intended, because we know one of the things that. Um you know, we talked about is that some of the things can't be offered, you know, with a smaller school. Because we need students, you know, to to try to develop um equity and choice. So I guess my concern is is uh and the and the other filter is, you know, we have these maybe different opportunities. To offer things in different ways, virtually, or, you know, expand opportunities. So I guess. Um my question is, if we, you know, are trying to encourage our coastal families to um take advantage of these great facilities that we have. But we also say, well, it's a smaller school, so we can't, you know, offer. Um then, you know, light bulbs begin to go off to parents and say, well, you know, I'm gonna exercise my choice. I want the best, broadest opportunities. So how can we, what are the ways that we can, you know. Offer the same, you know, broad choices, even if we have less students using. You know, um I I don't know, different, different avenues. I I guess that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I think you're right. Creativity will be key in the future. Thinking about, are there virtual opportunities? Are there opportunities to um, you know, be creative and opening up um, you know, possibilities for students? When you look at the facilities and opportunities at Moro Bay High School.
Right, right.
Only you're talking about world class, I mean, amazing opportunities there. And I uh you never want to give the the inadvertent message that there's something inferior there. I mean, that, I mean, you you let industry, when they walk through there, their eyes just, you know, boggle, right? And their jaw drops at at this kind of opportunity for high school students, and they drool, you know, at like, man. Wish I had this kind of opportunities, you know, um just, and and I think it's, it will be creative. If opportunities down the road, if there's virtual, if there's, you know, other things to do. The only piece that I was just trying to bring home is that, you know, if you have a hundred students and you have ten offerings. You've got ten kids per class, you know. If you have a thousand students and ten offerings, you have a hundred kids, you know, so it's just. You know, you don't want to give the message that because you have less pathways, that it's somehow less of a program. That's, that's just not true. It's that you have less offerings because you have less people to go into those offerings, right? So um I think we we have to be careful of our message. There's incredible opportunities. It's just less number of students, right? So um so you, it's just a division problem, you know what I mean? It's the, the number of offerings with with the number of students.
Well, that's what.
Well, I think Ryan has something to add.
Yeah, just two things along with that same line of thinking, Kim, just so you know. So Evelyn, too, you have to look at like. Again, like at Moro Bay High, the band program is so gigantic. And so a lot of our class offerings are based on student interest, right? So depending on what kids sign up for, what they want to take, that oftentimes will lead to what is actually offered at the school site. So, you know, when you got Bryn with a hundred fifty kids in a band class, like, you're, you may have a few less offerings because of that. So it's, it a lot of times, the master schedule is built on what kids want to take. And we have given Moro Bay extra staff, just so everybody, uh as well as Los Osos Middle School. To ensure that they have everything that kids, you know, want to have in terms of, you know, the extra section of an AP class. Or whatever it is, we've always tried to ensure that they get the extra staff to do that. So their staffing is much lower in terms of the number of kids per teachers than at slow high. So so that's something, just so I want the board to know, we have, you know, we've given them extra staffing. And then the other part too, just, and this is good for Scott to hear too. Listen, it, at at Moro Bay High, it is so much easier to be a star. To be on the football team, the soccer team, the, you you know, different things, because it's a smaller school. There's actually more opportunities a lot of times for kids. So you can flip the way you think about that. And a lot of people will rather have their kid go to Moro Bay High because there there is a lot more opportunity for their child. Than if they had gone to slow high in terms of the competition that is often faced with a lot of different programs. So just, there's different ways of looking at the smaller school versus larger school. There's pros and cons.
Well, I think the only thing I was gonna say, Ryan, is I think that um the messaging we have to be really careful about. And and you do see those parents, you don't see many parents coming from in-town to Moro Bay High School. You see, it is mostly the other direction. So it's, it's, I mean. And and I think that we are really working hard and have done a great job. I just don't want to undersell the great facilities and great, amazing things. That are happening at Moro Bay High School, and so that's why I want to be really careful about that messaging, because there is so many um great things. And if there's a way to also be creative to add, you know, that that's kind of, I guess, my concern when when we just have to be careful.
I think Jeff had one thing to add to that, too.
Yeah, so the, about the the opportunity part of it, if you look at our CTE completer numbers, if you compare the uh Moro Beta to slow high. Our numbers are way higher, we're over seventy-five percent um to a number of students that complete the CTA path, CTE pathway. And that is directly related to the bell schedule. Um with us having an opportunity, have our students having six classes a day, other than five at slow, it gives us, excuse me, it gives our students um. More opportunity to take those electives. Um but we're also getting creative in in our way of offering of like electives. Of being able to offer, um let's say, our our law pathway. Um we're looking at saying, one year we will offer intro to law, but we won't offer the um criminal law class. And then the next year, we would only offer criminal law. That way, we can open up more space in our master schedule to offer. That if just on a rotating basis, we're looking at in our science, in our science department to offer um more science programs. We're looking to do it in um some of our our other elective areas um to get more options for the students. It's just, they might have to wait a year to take. So that's just one of the things we have to do with this.
Thanks.
And real, this is Scott, real quick, I just want to echo what what Ryan shared about Moro Bay and Los Osos. Having, having some additional staffing. So I I don't feel like at Moro Bay High, we are not able to offer the same options at San Luis I. In fact, at times, some of our classes that we will offer uh will have less students, which, if you know, if you're thinking about this from a mindset of of like. How colleges sell themselves, our student-to-teacher ratio is lower. So we might have a calculus class with only nineteen students in it, which might not happen at San Luis Obispo High School. So I feel strong that that what Jeff has shared, and Jeff and Stephanie on our team, and with the support we have uh from Ryan and the team at the dish office. That that messaging that that Evelyn is talking about, we will be working diligently with our community to make sure they hear that.
Great, awesome. Thank you. Perfect.
So does anyone have one final question before we go on break? All right, so I'm not hearing any, unless Mark, I see you moving your mouth. Are you? Are are you on mute and want to talk, or are you talking to someone else? Yeah. Okay, you don't have a question. That's what I'm hearing.
No, 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 my cat, it's the cat. I have a really old.
Okay. Awesome. All right, so it's, uh, 10:54 by my computer. So how about we come back at 11:05 to launch into vision, mission, and core principles? Thank you to all the staff that stuck with us all morning to, uh, talk about middle school and high school. I know it's very much important to the board and probably the parents listening. Great. See you at 11:05. Hi, everybody. We're, everyone's just coming back. If, uh, board members have their cameras on, then I'll, uh, um, know that they're here and present. And for, um, Christopher, a quorum, how many do you need?
Well, actually, since we're not voting on anything, um, the people that are here are here. So I would say we actually though have a quorum. We have more than four people, so we're good.
Okay, great. Well, thanks again for sticking with us on a day that's super busy. I think the rest of our agenda, we can move through fairly quickly. It just depends on how much discussion and, and interest there is from the board to discuss various pieces. So the next part of our agenda, we would like to, uh, talk to you about mission, vision, and core principles. So just to review, early on in our process, we sent a survey back out in March to the board to get your initial input about your thoughts about vision and values. Then we presented, um, we took that information and compiled it and presented it back to you. And Becca and I took some, uh, stab at writing some statements and shared that with staff. And staff created a version based on that input that you provided. And we sent that out in May, and that was that, um, version that you just reviewed and sent comments in on for this cycle. So we got comments back from board members. Thank you very much for reviewing the draft, mission, vision, and core principles. And then we took that and we had a small, um, drafting group sit down, which was made up of, um, staff, the consultant team, Becca and I, and the board officers. And we looked at all the comments from the board and sat down and said, how can we, um, tweak these statements to capture that input? So Becca and I am going to share with you first the, um, vision and mission, comparing the current draft that the drafting team came up with and the previous draft. So I, just as a reminder, your vision statement would be a short inspirational statement of what the world would be like when you have achieved your mission. And your mission statement is also a short, clear, concise, easy-to-remember statement of purpose. It's what you do. It's basically what you do to bring about your vision. So vision, where you want to be, where you want to go, mission statement, what do you do as an organization? To make that happen. So, Becca, the vision and mission statements. So the drafting team took, um, the previous draft and we, and we heard what everyone's feedback was. And this is what we have determined as a next draft. And there's also, I apologize, I, I emailed you this morning a handout. If it's easier for you to have that handout up, it's got the, um, vision, mission, and core principles. So this is, "San Luis Coastal prepares each student for a life of purpose. Students become courageous and creative thinkers. They are college and career-ready, skillful collaborators, and productive contributors to a diverse and rapidly evolving world." The, Evelyn, you're looking. You're, um, you're on mute.
And maybe, Adrian, we should talk a little about how much time we want to spend on.
Yeah, so really what we're looking here for, um, everyone to take this in for a minute, see how it resonates with you. I think I'd like to share the mission statement too, so you can see them together, side by side. And what we're looking for at this stage is just the, you know, we could sit and, and, and edit for quite a long time. We sat for two hours just the other day doing it. So what we're looking for, um, folks to say is, does this work okay for you? Is this something that you can live with? Knowing that as time progresses, you can always, uh, your vision and mission can evolve as you evolve as an organization, but does this capture, for the most part, what the group is thinking now? And then, so quickly, the mission statement, and we can go back to vision. Uh, so the mission statement we came up with, so the original draft, we, we pointed out is more of a tagline. And so the staff is going to create a tagline, um, as part of their communication plan and, uh, bring it, the full plan to the board after reviewing some of the ideas that they have for tagline and talking with some focus groups. So you'll see that at a later time from staff. So we sat down as the editor group and we said, okay, how can we take this and still make it short and punchy, but make it a true mission statement? And so what we came up with was, "San Luis Coastal Unified School District educates students through rigorous, relevant, and engaging experiences provided by caring, connected staff with support of the entire community." So, I'm sorry, we put it on two different slides. We'll have to go back and forth between slides if anyone wants to. Or if you have your handout in front of you, they're both right there.
Yeah, I can pull that up if you want to see them together. I'll make that happen.
So again, this is the culmination of, of, uh, hearing the board, what you initially said to us, but trying to make it very succinct.
Can you see the word document now with?
No, we, we're still, where you're still sharing. I think you have to unshare the PDF. I'm gonna send you the PowerPoint.
All right, um, now can you see them side by side? Okay.
Eric, you're shaking your head. Can you see the vision and mission together?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes.
Evelyn.
Rested out.
Evelyn, you're on mute.
Sorry, I just couldn't see anything. That's why I was waving my hand. But I lost my visual. When you were talking, I had audio, but I had nothing. So, thank you. That's all.
Okay.
Thanks.
So, uh, you know, ultimately, I'd like, I'd like a thumbs up. Yes, we can live with this. We feel like this is going where we want it to go. Or, no, no, or no, I'm, I can't live with this. I'm getting Mark and Eve thinking this works for us. I've got some other board members still taking it in. And let us know if you would like to look at the comparisons again. We can bring that up on the screen if needed. But you should also have that in your handout that we sent. And know that you'll see this again in the draft document that we're sending at the beginning of July before our July 15th meeting. So if something rises up for you at that time, you'll be able to send in comments. But we would like to get some general consensus today, if at all possible.
I must say, you know, being in the drafting group, Catherine and I worked together on it with the rest of the folks. We really tried to take into account what the board members' comments and input were as we tried to draft what we thought reflected. And I'm in support of this. Again, I saw that Mark and Eves had their thumbs up. And so I guess we're looking forward to whether the rest of the board would like to see something like this come forward, knowing that they'll have a chance to provide other input on the 15th.
Okay. Two more thumbs ups there. Thank you. And I just want to think that the drafting committee too, it's hard to talk about what we do in a mission statement in a way that really brings in our values and what makes us different. And I think we started to really capture that in this mission statement. It was very exciting. It was nice to get off Zoom too.
Yes, and I can attest that everyone was really working hard to try and find something that captured what each board member said. I printed out each board member's comments in a document for those folks that were in the meeting, and we looked at everyone's thoughts and really tried to capture not only the intent of each comment, but in some places, the specific wording requests that were made. So I feel like we got the majority of board members saying, okay, I know Catherine's had to step away and Ellen's still reflecting because I know I hit you, I hit you with it intentionally, intentionally with not a lot of time to take it in because again, you know, you want to have, you want your vision and your mission to, you want to have that visceral reaction to it, right? That immediate reaction of like, does this work or doesn't it work? And I didn't want it to sit too long in your inbox because I was attempting to avoid kind of the, we can always edit something a little bit more, right? We can always continue to edit and wordsmith. Well, knowing that this is not your last opportunity to suggest edits, because we will be seeing this again prior to the July 15th meeting, I'm going to going to suggest that we move forward and talk about core principles, given that the majority of the board says that they could live with this for now. Does that work for anyone? Does that, or does that not work for anyone? Okay, I'm not hearing anybody say that they don't like that. So moving on. So core principles, these are your value statements as an organization. They are the beliefs that you hold when you're making decisions as a district. They're particularly good to fall back on when you're navigating new territory or sticky situations. And so the, we didn't make a lot of changes here from the draft that you got in May that the staff put together. There's six core principles, and I've listed them here on this slide. The only difference that we made in the drafting team was that we took the culture of safety and tried to broaden that out a little bit to be a culture of care and safety. So they are all means all, high expectations, respect and integrity, collaboration and civil discourse, culture of care and safety, and continuous improvement. So the handout that I emailed you before the meeting has the language in the May draft and the language now after the drafting team took comments from the board and included those. So really what we did here was we added some language to high expectations based on some of the board principal, excuse me, board priorities that you were giving Eric for the next school year. We also included additional language into this broadened out culture of care and culture of safety. Again, language that we were pulling from those board priorities that you'd already discussed on the seventh with Eric. And that is the two major changes that we made to the wording of these. And Becca can bring up a side by side comparison of the wording on the screen if that's helpful for folks. It starts to get a little small, so that's why we wanted you to have your handout to refer to. Would anyone like Becca to bring that side by side comparison up on the screen? Evelyn would like to please, Becca.
And and maybe oh, sorry, I think you have two things at once. Maybe if there's anything minor, people see they can email it to us too, in the interest of time. We can try to.
Yeah. And so absolutely, if there's, if there's wording changes or wording additions you would like in the description of each of these six core principles, we totally have an opportunity to do that between now and the July 15th meeting. I guess first and foremost, I'd like to just check in to ensure that these, these main bolded terms are resonating with the board. The all means all, high expectations, respect and integrity, collaboration and civil discourse, culture of care and safety, and continuous improvement. Are the, do these feel like these values that you fall back on when you are deciding what your goals are for the organization, when you're making decisions for school years? And again, I'm sure we could add 15 values, but we're again trying to keep it to these highest principles. Yes, Evelyn, and I would just add, we didn't get a ton of comment from the board before this meeting about this. And so, I mean, that could be you're very busy, or we were hoping that it also meant that these kind of are resonating with you already. Evelyn.
Yes, they, these absolute, I mean, speaking for myself, they represent loud and clear for me. My only question, and I, I don't know if it fits, it's, you know, the board's priority has been a high focus and priority has been on equity. I don't see that word in here. I'm not advocating for it. I just I didn't, and I didn't, and to be, and you know, full disclosure, I didn't really do my homework on this part, so. But I just didn't know if it's found somewhere else, or there's a, so I guess that would be my question.
I'm gonna let Eric add some thoughts about that because it's a conversation that we've had with him.
Yeah, Evelyn, I so appreciate that you brought this up, and I want you to know that when I put these together as core principle concepts, I was very deliberate, and I know Becca pushed back on me a bit on this, and I still am willing to push back on against this idea of using the word equity. I like the word, of course. It's an incredible word. I think it's a overused word and a very easily misunderstood and misrepresented word. And, and so what are some of the universal terms that I've come to know in my life that have stayed true? And, you know, we know, growing up in California, words like multiculturalism were fantastic during their day, and then they became manipulated and overused and vilified even. And so we're seeing that now used in, we're seeing that attempt used with words like equity. And so what I'd like to do is use the words respect and integrity. And this, the reason I, I'm, I feel this is, I mean, certainly your call, but I think equity comes out of these core principles. That if we apply ourselves with this idea that we're going to include all, all kids, all people with high expectations, treat people with respect and integrity, collaborate and engage people in a civil manner, focus on culture of care and safety, and we're going to continuously commit ourselves to improvement, lifelong learning. I think it's through those core principles that equity naturally occurs because you aren't leaving anyone behind. You are focusing on all kids in an inclusive manner. And you're doing it in ways that are universally sound without having to use the word equity. We're applying the principles that lead us to it. And that's my thinking here.
Mark and then Eve and then Catherine. Oh, Evelyn, did you want to, sorry, Evelyn just wants to follow up on that really quickly, Mark.
No, and I, and I appreciate that explanation, Eric, because I, it is a word that has, has grown and diff, and it is taking on meanings that has pitted groups against one another.
Yep.
And so having, you know, the, the only reason I, I brought forth, because I know it's a, it's something that we're all aware of. And it wasn't to encourage the use of it. I just was, was curious as to how we were going to apply it. So
Yeah. And so the intent here from staff was it's interwoven through these.
Right.
Mark.
Yeah, so I totally, I totally support that. Evelyn, it slowed me down as well. But then I was thinking, let's not put any instant targets in here. So it just, you get, some folks are going to answer that word equity and just stop. And so I really appreciate the, the sort of getting that whole thought in there as you did, Evelyn, and just not giving the target, just giving the meaning. So I just congratulations on that.
Evelyn, I'm gonna send you Eve.
Yes, I'm just following along the same line of thinking. Yes, those words have become politicized and kind of follows suits with, follows suit with what I was saying the other day about the word systemic. Also, so thank you for that. I'm certainly concurring wholeheartedly with the way you have explained that and dealt with it and made it just something that is timeless rather than this day and age.
Yeah. Thank you.
Catherine. And you're on mute, Catherine.
Okay, good. I'm caffeinated now, so. I just wanted to, I liked, at least appeared to me to be the addition of continuous improvement, which is the notion that we're always every one of us as a teacher, as a board member, as a student is always trying to get, get beyond where we are today. So moving forward, and I thought that was a very, I like adding that because it's, it gives a momentum to what we're, what we're all doing and that, that we're not going to wrestle our laurels, even if if people are satisfied with, with where they are. We're going to continue giving them that challenge. So love that. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm hearing that these core principles are resonating with you all. Wanting to leave time to talk about fourth through sixth grade goals, I'm going to pose the question to you all of you that these six feel like your six, and that if there's specific edits that you'd like to make to some of the wording describing these six, that we can absolutely consider those between now and the 15th? But that, that these are looking, again, I'm asking for like generally, you're feeling like these are feeling pretty good to you. Maybe there's a couple tweaks of specific wording, but in general, yes, or no.
I'm is this, are there wording that you can post? I could, I just, I thought I opened everything I had. And I probably did look at it, but I just didn't know.
You did, and you just sent comments on it.
Okay.
Okay.
So I've got at least one person saying, oh, and Marilyn has a question or comment.
Yeah, I for me, the vision statement and the mission statement are a pretty generic. And I think you could find them in school districts across the country in some shape, similar shape or form. But for me, the core principles are excellent, and they really flesh out the mission statement and the vision statement. So on the whole, I'm I'm very happy to proceed with, with what I'm looking at here.
And when you're communicating to the general public or to your teachers or your parents, you're going to be presenting all of this as a package, right? Most, most often, you're going to be talking about all these together. When you look at what your new website is going to look like, that Dr. Prater and the district staff are putting together, these are all going to be on the same page together. So if somebody wants to know what is San Luis Coastal School District really about, they're going to see this all together.
Great, great. Thank you.
So I got a couple thumbs up. We're feeling pretty good with this. We would like to move ahead and getting a couple more. Anybody else want to weigh in yea or nay before we move into goals? Okay, so does anyone feel like they can't live with this language going forward to our July 15th meeting? All right. Thank you so much. Thank you for the, the multiple months of work thinking about this on top of the multitude of other things that you have had to deal with in, since January. And I just wanted to say a special thank you to the staff and to the two board officers who sat down after a very long day on the seventh and spent some time writing this with us. I think that that was incredibly useful time spent, and so I appreciate that because I know you're very busy. So moving on, um, after each one of our education, grade span education sessions, we've come back to you and said, what do you think? What are these top priorities that you would have for this specific age group? And so we did that with the preschool through kindergarten age range. And now we're asking you to do that for four through six. And so Becca is going to bring up something to take some notes. And so I, I asked some to the group, what are some goals that you might have? And there, I got a couple back that we will share with you, but also just wanted to open it up a little bit to brainstorming. Again, what are these high level goals that you have for this grade span? So just as an example, when you were talking about preschool through third, you said, you know, planned phased in three, over three years, full day, a standard schedule for preschool and TK and kindergarten. Assess programmatic needs in preschool and TK offer offerings to ensure alignment of schedules that benefit students and working families and the utility in kindergarten. So this is kind of the level of goal that we're looking for, for this age group as well. And you'll see that Becca put up on the screen. So it's actually the bullets from the last slide of Kim's presentation for that group. And we thought it might be useful to kind of look at this as we have this discussion, the idea of, you know, you might have an academic success focused goal or a social emotional wellness goal. Again, could be useful as a discussion jumping off point or not. Evelyn, I think you had a comment, and then I, and then also I wanted to just get some initial thoughts, and then I was going to share a couple of the items that we got from others over email.
And, and Adrian, this may not be what other people need or anything, but I was wondering, at least for me, helpful to look at since even though they're discrete grade spans, looking at the continuum so that as I'm framing and teeing up this particular, I look behind and but that could be just me and I can do it another time. So
No, we can absolutely bring up that. We have a file that Becca has that has all the long term goals that we've drafted thus far together. The, we have district wide, multi-grade level ones as well as the preschool. It takes up a good chunk of screen, but we're happy to do that.
Yeah, but if it's confusing for other people or whatever, please don't. I, I'm just trying to think in terms of the discrete grade level, and then of course, how it fits into prior. So
Yep. And if you want, you should probably have in your email as well. I think I want to, I want I think I want to, I want to say I sent it on May twenty-seventh, that, that document of the, the goals altogether. So some of the things I heard, um, from the group before this session, the idea of robust outdoor learning opportunities at the elementary school level. So it came up in conversation through this fourth through sixth grade, uh, span. Though my question to you is, do you want it just focused on fourth through sixth grade? Or would you, uh, think of that as across the, um, the elementary school level? The conversation was around teach and the, the outdoor education programs. They have a teach and, and considering making that more of a district-wide effort. Another comment received, expose students to possible career tracks through guest speakers or field trips or other ways so that not, you're not waiting till middle school or high school for the kids to start to get a taste of this, but, um, getting a sense of that in elementary school. And then, um, the last, uh, comment I got was ensure students are prepared for that transition to middle school. So there are some programs, uh, you know, summer or end of school year, summer programs that help kids transition into middle school. But having that be a much more kind of intentional thought, uh, in the upper grades and how the school year progresses for upper grades, um, I think was the intent of that comment. Mark?
Yep, so, um, I'm kind of interested in the concept of, um, the teach, um, being a model. One of the reasons I think it was developed years ago was to find things that worked, but, um, my impression. We, we had during bringing students back, we seem to have where we brought them half at a time. So in some of the elementary classes, when I went in, teachers were like, wow, I've got kids that are participating, raising their hands and speaking that have never done that before. And their feeling was that it was half the class size. And so as I look at what teach does, where there's, um, a lot of the outside opportunity, my thinking is, well, that's been working, that's why we set up teach. So maybe there's a way to start transferring that concept to the other schools as it works, because it does work to teach and that's why it was established. So just as an example, what I'm thinking, what I was hearing, um, during the pandemic thing was half the kids are in class, half are at home, but half the kids are in class and then half the kids are outside, reinforcing it with learning experiences that are outside. So I'm, I'm just kind of listening to what, what teachers were telling me and then trying to apply it somehow.
Yeah, so having a more rigorous outdoor learning opportunities for elementary school and how that could, um, flow students through their day for smaller class sizes. Yeah. Other thoughts?
And, and if this doesn't strike passion, we can work on, um, building out the staff proposed goals and bring those back to you too. Don't feel like you have to do this work.
I know, meeting fatigued for this week and definitely maybe some Zoom fatigue already today. And you've got a full day of graduations to, uh, go to next, so.
So I just, uh, in looking at the data that we were given and looking at the difference between, um, non-SED and SED, uh, rates of accomplishment, I don't know what, how, what the wording is, but it's closing the achievement gap, maybe academics is set for all students. But I'm just whethering, wondering whether the term SED needs to appear somewhere to help define it or whether we don't want to be that specific and just keep it open. Just my, my thought on this.
Becca, did you, did you get that? So, so, so I'm going to, so Mark is basically saying, hey, let's kind of look really closely at, um, SED and EL students and what maybe they need in these grades. And I'm just pulling from our conversation earlier and prepping for middle school that again, if we, if we want to, middle school's a difficult time. So really getting, again, getting those kids prepared and focusing on those specific groups too, to make sure that they're prepared. Chris and then, or excuse me, Marilyn and then Chris, because Marilyn did have her hand up.
I'm wondering if we could look at earlier avid identification. At, at, at the very least with sixth graders, um, in town. Because we, we, I'm not sure, I guess I need clarification. Are we picking them up at Los Osos Middle School in the sixth grade? Question. And then, um, can we transfer that ability to pick up sixth graders into town? And, um, is there any advantage to the students in even earlier identification?
Jump into, address that a little. So, um, sixth grade, whether it's at Los Osos or in the city is the grade level that we use to identify students for, to begin in the seventh grade avid program.
And we've explored elementary avid previously, uh, Mrs. Roger. And, and there's some elements of it that we do still use at, uh, the elementary level, like note taking and things like that. But we don't have the comprehensive, uh, avid program at the elementary level.
And so I guess my question is, would that be beneficial?
Yeah, I mean, we, like I said, we did it for a number of years previously. You know, back in the day, I couldn't remember how long it's been, probably longer than I realized. But, um, we did it for, I want to say maybe three years. And after that time, because it's fairly expensive. And after that time, we figured that, uh, a couple of the elements that we really liked about it, we could continue without being officially avid, uh, you know, registered at, at elementary level.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayfield.
Chris and then Mark.
Yeah, so it looks like, I think some of these things we may be addressing in our LCAP already. I just want to point that out, um, especially when we talk about SED and EL student needs. I mean, obviously those are supposed to be parts of the LCAP. One of the things that it may be a little bit of a bird walk, thinking about what Marilyn said earlier, avid identification. One of the things that, it, it was a concern of mine when we were having the conversation this morning, and this is why I'd like to know more about avid actually, is that the most, the most successful students are students that were successful anyway. And so what we're doing is we're just giving them a, you know, giving them that extra boost. Well, we have a whole lot of students who are, maybe we're not identifying them for avid. What happens to them? So, you know, it seems like, I, this, this is going to be a funny way of putting it. It seems like from what I, I heard, avid is almost a gate program for kids that are already good at six, you know, that are already successful to help boost their success. What about the rest of them? And I would just throw that out there, I don't expect a comment on this, right?
Mark and then I saw that Ellen had her hand up, but she just turned her camera off. So let's go to Mark, oh, Ellen.
Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, go ahead, Mark and then Ellen.
I'm sorry. Okay, so can we go back? I see what you, what you jotted down and I just maybe wanted to find it a little differently than smaller class sizes. It, in order to accomplish it, we can't just, we don't have enough classrooms to provide smaller class, like my understanding. We don't have enough classrooms to provide smaller class sizes everywhere. So the concept, um, that I've seen, and it sounds like maybe what teach is doing, but is, so if it's a class of thirty, fifteen would be in the classroom, fifteen would be out being, doing some kind of hands-on activity, something, um, something that we've talked about earlier. And then they would just flipping during the day and they, they, so the class size would be smaller, but the, all the students are on campus and half of them are doing some kind of hands-on activity outdoor in a, in a lab, so.
Yeah, so Becca, maybe just say smaller group, um, smaller group activities.
Yeah, it's, um, maybe I, maybe I just don't.
No, the, the, the nomenclature, I think, or the, the, I, I definitely understand what you're saying, Mark. It is, um, it's, it's re, it's reimagining, um, how you schedule, uh, your student activities, your student, uh, groups. And so it's a, it's a flex, it's a, an innovative flex model. This isn't necessarily what teach does. But, but what it is, is it's a, it's a really creative way. What we did in the, what we learned as a silver lining in the COVID world, when we did the, um, the learning pods, is that half the kids would come in the morning. We would identify the kids in the morning session who, uh, needed a little additional work. And they would go to a learning pod, a small group focus in the afternoon. So the child would be there all day, but the teacher would only see half of the students. And then, um, the same thing would apply for those kids coming in the afternoon, in the academic session. They would have learning pod assignments in the morning. So that really elevated an awareness that some, that teachers were able to accomplish more in the academic setting, uh, because they had half the number of kids. And so how we manage that flexibility is actually embedded in the learning achieve, the learning, sorry, the, um, the strategic direction. I am, I think we embedded that in, um, I want to say the first, um, strategic direction, which had to do with flexible scheduling, um, and innovative flexible scheduling, which allows for some of those things that Mark's referring to to happen. We will need, we will absolutely need to negotiate that, it for sure. So, you know, all roads lead to Rome or whatever that saying is. So something that we need to think about. But I think it's an absolutely ru, really essential conversation to have.
Thank you.
Yep.
Ellen?
Thanks, yeah, I just wanted to take it back on a couple of things. Um, you know, I agree that a lot of this is covered in the LCAP and I think that, we do have groups that we need to pay particular attention to. But I think, I also believe that, you know, all means all. And if we have that really embedded in, in our thinking all the time, we're going to address a lot of this. I think that, um, yeah, avid does, it does give a boost to, to the students who are, who are independently directed to begin with. I mean, that's part of their name. Um, and I think that we do have kids who, who need extra attention. We also need to, um, make sure that, you know, many of our high flyer kids are, come from homes that where they're, where they're, you know, parents are, they have a lot more parental support, but we also have the potential for a lot more of those kids. They just haven't been identified or have just that, their boost as well. So I, I, I get nervous when we're focusing on particular groups of kids because it starts sounding like we're not thinking about others. And that's when I come back to the all means all, all means all, all the time. So that's just sort of how I try to think about this.
And it's one of your core values, yeah. Mark?
Yep, and so Ellen, I totally appreciate that. And it may be that what I'm thinking about or how do we deal with, within all means all, there's the groups that make up all. And so maybe, maybe I'm just too, too many steps down. So vision, mission, values, and then implementation. And that maybe is what falls on, on staff. And so I still think, I, I don't know if it would ever appear in anything that we print up from the board, but I, I just, I don't know how else to share that it, it just looked like it was a great, a great opportunity. I don't disagree with you, but somewhere down the line, we are looking at individual, individual groups, the, the accelerated and the, and the folks that need help. Thanks for letting me explain that.
Chris?
Well, I, I think what we're talking about is differentiated instruction and first best instruction. And making sure that that is, uh, interwoven throughout everything we do.
Thank you for that. Other thoughts about fourth through sixth grade, specifically focused for that age group? High priority goals that you would have long-term? And remember, we are, so just to give you a little preview of next steps. So over the next month, I'll be asking all of you to send us what your initial thoughts are for goals for middle school and high school, now that we've heard those presentations. And then on the fifteenth of July, we're going to present a full draft package for your review, the vision, the mission, the core principles and these long-term vision goals that you, um, have for each grade span. And so on July fifteenth, we'll have that opportunity to look at this again. You can even, if, if you have ideas of fourth through sixth grade between now and, you know, the beginning of July, you can absolutely send them to Becca and I, and we can include them in that draft package that we'll be looking at, um, in July. And my goal is to get the full draft package for you two weeks ahead of that meeting. So it would be maybe right after that July, uh, Fourth Holiday, if I'm doing math correctly for that. I mean, well, yeah, that gives you almost two weeks to, um, resonate with that draft, um, before we discuss it. Does that sound like an okay approach for that? So, um, we have 10 minutes left. Happy to continue to talk about fourth through sixth grade. I also feel like folks are kind of feeling a little fatigued. Um, and so it, it might be a better use of our time to just break and knowing that you can continue to send ideas to Becca and I that will work with the staff to come up with that draft for you, um, by July.
Yeah, and I, Adrian, I so much appreciate you and Becca's work on this. It's, it's, you know, it's tedious, there's a lot in there and I appreciate, um, the civil discourse that we've engaged in. It's very nice, um, but, um, but, uh, yeah, I look forward to, um, the July fifteenth, sort of put a ribbon on it. And, um, Mandy and I are working feverishly on, I should say, Mandy is working feverishly with her team on the new website. And so these elements are literally being framed into the website. So it'll look wonderful, it really is impressive. And, um, so I, I know this is a whole lot going on right now, but I promise you it'll make sense when we come back into the new year, how it all works together. So, um, it'll provide organizational clarity, it'll help our, our new principles, it'll help our staff and it'll provide a level of clarity when we go to the bargaining table next year that we haven't previously had. So I, I'm, I'm excited for that and I appreciate all your work.
Yeah. Eve, you had a, a final thought?
Just to clarify, maybe just for me only, um, so the next meeting, July in June, no, July.
July fifteenth.
Yeah, we're going to talk about seventh through twelfth.
We are going to talk about, uh, six, seven through twelve, yes. And anything else that you feel like you need to revisit. And you'll have the draft ahead of time so that you can really sit with it, um, and see what you think. So going to be asking you to send me your initial ideas through seven through twelve so we can include that in that draft for you, um, that you get in early July.
Great, looking forward to it, thank you.
Okay, thank you all. Busy week, enjoy celebrating all the students and their achievements. Pretty exciting, it's nice, it's nice to see, we can have some celebrations now.
Okay, so we'll see you all at four thirty, um, in the, um, at the Slow High, uh, I think the big gym is where we're meeting, so. Evelyn?
I think Evelyn has a question, yeah.
Uh, you're, you're on mute, Evelyn.
Parking, do you know where we should be kind of aiming to park? Just?
Yeah, yeah, I, I, yeah, Catherine?
You could park at my house. There's plenty of room and you can just walk around and block, so feel free.
Catherine, I appreciate that, yeah, if you could park at Catherine's, that would be one great option. The other one is I'll make sure that you have, uh, dedicated spots in the, um, in the, uh, the new circle parking loop at Slow High, in the parking lot there, in front of the new office. We'll make sure that you guys have a spot there. You know, the only danger of going in there is that you have to get out of there. We'll make sure that you guys have a spot there. You know, the only danger of going in there is that you have to get out of there. And so that might take you a while, like, you know, after a football game or a basketball game, you know. So Catherine's is nice because it's probably an easier exit strategy. But, but yeah, we'll make sure there are spots for you in the pickup drop-off, the circular loop at Slow High.
I think Eve has another logistical question too.
Asking, I might be the only one. Catherine, could you send me your address?
1727 Coralitos.
Just to be clear, we're meeting in the, in the new gym. Because I thought the original direction was we'd be meeting up in the office here and then walking down together. And that may have changed since the flood.
Yeah, you know, absolutely. I'll be up here, putting on my attire and I will walk down. So I will be up here in the main, in B3, not the office, because they're, they are shampooing the carpet right now. And it's, it's very noisy. And so B3 is where I will be. And then I will walk down at 4:15. So feel free to come up to the office, park here and walk down. The only reason I did not suggest that to everyone is that it's, it's, those stairs, walking down are, are dangerous. And then walking up are perilous. So it's a, it, you'll be, you'll be tired walking up. And so if you're up for that, you can join me. If you'd rather, there will, to avoid those steps, we'll make sure you have a spot in the front of the new office. And then we will meet in the, in the big gym or the new gym at 4:30. Okay. Does that work?
Perfect.
Thanks, everybody. I really appreciate it. Okay. Bye-bye.